Good evening, everybody. It's 6:01. And welcome to the October 15th Angels Campus City Council meeting. Roll call please.
Uh, Councilmember Shemante?
Present.
Councilmember Rorleo? Councilmember Sharada?
Present.
Staff is present.
Uh, next is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we report out of closed session. Uh, direction was given to staff on item A. Next, we move on to item number seven. Recognition and acknowledgements. Certificate of acknowledgement honoring 170 years of dedication and excellence presented to the California Electric Steel Company. So, do we have anybody here from the tonight?
We have the A nonstop.
Okay. Well, read the...
Yeah.
The acknowledgement. So, certificate of acknowledgement honoring 170 years of dedication and excellence presented to the California Electric Steel. In recognition of your unparalleled achievement and commitment to industry and community, this certificate is proudly awarded to the California Electric Steel, the longest continually running steel foundry west of the Mississippi. For 170 years, through the stewardship of the Helby and Will families, your foundry has stood as a testament to perseverance, innovation, and craftsmanship. Your dedication to quality and tradition has shaped not only your business, but also the lives of countless employees, customers, and partners. We celebrate your legacy of excellence and with sincere gratitude acknowledge your significant contributions to the steel industry and the continued impact you have on our community. May your tradition of success and leadership endure for many more generations to come. Presented on this day, October 12th, 2024. Thank you very much. Move on to item number eight. Approval of the agenda as posted unless anybody wants to change anything public or up front here. Once, twice, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Summoned.
One second.
All in favor say aye or no. Roll call please.
Shemante?
Aye.
Rorleo?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye. Thank you.
Number nine is public comment. The public may address the county on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda, that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Do we have anybody in the audience with public comment? Okay. Anybody online?
There is... No, no public comment online.
Okay. Then I will move on and I will close public comment and move on to item number 10. Consent agenda. Anybody up here wanna?
I had a question. On the minute, there were a couple of, um, just typos.
Okay.
I don't know if we need...
I'll go back and look at it before it gets time.
Any member of the public want to pull anything on consent agenda? If not, I will look for a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Shemante?
Aye.
Rorleo?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to item number 11. Regular Agenda A. Utica Park Lightner Mine Expansion Project. Amy Augustin.
I guess I call you mayor, councilmembers. Um, basically, you've been seeing lots of activity out there. You'll see a lot of grading and cement work over the next, uh, four weeks. Storm drains going in, walkways going in. Pavilion should be finished by the end of next week. They'll be putting in the lights. You've already seen the skylights go in. I would like some input from you tonight. And I see that Justin is online. He had brought up at public comment the need for speed bumps, um, to be installed. We did receive an estimate for that from Boyer of $9,000 to install the speed bumps while they're doing the asphalt work. Um, we would have to take that from either Transportation or General Bund or whatever, but I needed some feedback from you as to whether or not we should proceed with looking at putting speed bumps in at the park. There would be two per engineer that would be placed there. Um, basically, you should get near the bathrooms and then one a little bit further up, um, near the houses, the houses towards the end. Happy to answer any questions.
So that was two at $9,000 each or $9,000 total?
No, $9,000 total. If they get to do it while the rest of their asphalt work, yes.
Any other questions for a second from councilmembers? And then I'll open it to public comment and we get feedback.
So, Tab, do you think speed bumps?
Well, first I'd look to see what they're charging and what you get. Portable ones or the ones you put in?
And you bolt them down?
If you bolt them down, you don't need a lot. Only speeding so far, it isn't a long road. But I don't know, $9,000 seems like...
It must be those ported place asphalt ones, I would assume.
Yeah. Or whether, I just, I don't know. Soon as we had looked into something else. But once people get down there, they're gonna be slowing down because there's gonna be a lot of, you know, a lot of activity. You know, except late evenings or something when it's closed down and they go through. But I mean, it needs to be looked at, I think. But I don't know if there's other options that you might look at to see what would work. Either staggered bumps or those porta potters ones that the Rorleo family have or something like that.
Really? Okay.
Anyway, that's what I'm just thinking.
Any other public comment at the moment? Did Justin raise a hand or not?
No, there was, uh, somebody else.
Oh, okay. So I'll bring it back to council some questions because I have one. When is Blacktop going in? Do we, I mean, is this something we have to decide on tonight?
We could, we could, uh, boot this over to November 5th. November 19th, we're gonna be starting to get close. They're trying to get a lot of stuff like cement work and paving done before it starts raining. Or, but they may be able to push it back to December. I, my understanding was sooner rather than later would be a good thing.
I guess my question is, um, what does the, the road, uh, line item in our budget look like? If we have a traffic or traffic mitigation or so, is there, I'd like to see where there's some areas where we could pull that from that funding and move it over.
From the traffic impact mitigation?
Yeah, traffic impact mitigation. We also have a budget though for roads.
Roads? Right, yeah.
I don't know if we would be allowed to do that. And we did look into the temporary speed bumps for Gardner Lane, right?
Um, they did. I would have to go with the people that did that.
I thought the county did that or something.
No, we, that was a contractor and let them go through.
Chris has a fair amount of information on that.
Correct.
I can check with him.
So are you taking questions, Amy?
I was taking, yeah, questions on anything.
Oh, just on that or anything with the park?
But, yeah, anything with the park and just wanted some direction. It sounds to me like, yes, you do want this brought back November 5th with some additional information on alternatives and funding sources.
Right. I think that would be one.
Okay. I will do that.
So, looking at the set of plans, it looks like there's a DI on the corner that's gonna collect the water that's gonna be created from the new playground. Because all of that is sloping down and I see a swell. Um, is it gonna be a surface drain around? How is...
Did you look at it today?
I looked and saw the surface drain and I looked at the plans and the, this is like a collection box right there for the water?
And you saw the trench?
Yes.
Yeah. So they're working on drainage facilities right now.
Okay.
So, yeah, there is a pipe that's gonna go, I saw the pipe in the trench coming and drawing water down there. So, yes, it does look like it dumps down there, but I can get additional information.
No, I don't need it. But I'm just, I just wonder, so the whole idea of collecting the water that's gonna be created from the slopes that have been created to put the new playground in, there's gonna be some way to, to capture that water and move it away so it doesn't go across the playground?
Yes, exactly. And we have had, our public works department has been working very closely with Boyer to make sure that all the drainage, um, fits in with the existing storm drains and connects. So, yeah.
And then has, has there been, Steve or Amy, any, any thought given, uh, when we're putting additional pipe in or a chase underneath concrete in case we wanna do something in the future?
So, we actually, funny you should mention that, um, did meet with the people who are going to be doing electrical vehicle charging stations. Um, we do hope to put two in the park. And we are adding conduit for that in advance while the trenches open up. Um, we have not talked to them specifically about adding for other things. But again, we can put that forward to them.
Thank you.
What is the big pipe at the end or where the amphitheater is?
That's also drainage.
It is a big drain.
Well, there's a lot to drain.
All the corners, yeah.
Wow. Pretty impressive. I saw the bocci block where it was being created also that very...
Yes, everything's been graded. You should be able to see the outline of almost everything right now, including the outdoor gym.
Any other questions, comments? You gotta, you gotta come up this time, Tab. We're gonna go public comment again. We're gonna come, we're gonna bring, we're gonna...
I ask a question. My, my question is, is this set up? You probably know the answer. For cameras or anything to...
Surveillance.
To have somewhere surveillance, um, you know, especially during the night. And, and some conduit so if it wants to, if you want it somewhere around the park, they can be able to pull it, they can be able to pull it around to, toward the highway or the other parking areas that are gonna be proposed or, or even water lines for possible vegetation or, you know, vegetation, but landscaping. Yeah, anyway, that's kind of the question.
And the answer is, our police chief is looking into solar cameras. So he does not need any trenching for electricity. And so he's pursuing funding for that. And, uh, electrical and irrigation systems, we don't have those planned specifically yet. There will be some additional trenches for those to install that type of stuff. So electrical and water, um, that's coming up in a couple of weeks. They'll be doing that probably within a month.
I just thought after it was opening so you could see where you might wish you'd put some lights somewhere and it becomes a big chore and it never gets done. But you have some chase their lines out to the different places.
To the extent that it follows lines were already opening and trenching? Yes. To the extent that we would have to do a new one, probably not.
Okay. And I don't know where they're all going.
Okay. I think that's item number A. So we can move now on to item number B. Um, 11B. Approved Resolution Number 2482. Change Order Number Three for the view of Park Lightner Mine Expansion and Rehabilitation Project for Boyer Construction. Construction totaling $132,303.62 to purchase equipment and material for the outdoor gym. Amy.
Mayor, councilmembers, um, basically this is for the purchase only of materials. This does not include any labor. Boyer, um, agreed to take that on for us. Um, otherwise, there would be a very long process that could delay. Once we put in the order, it's gonna take up to three months to receive the equipment. If we have a bid process, it could take six months before we ever see the equipment. So basically, Boyer has agreed to go ahead and purchase that equipment for us. And then we're, we have time to get three bids for the installation. So if anybody would like to see what that's going to look like, we now have a color rendering of it. I'll be happy to ask one here. So it's a circuit basically, and it's in a circle for socialization reasons so that you can actually, uh, look at socializing. There's a black and white, oh no, they've had to turn color.
Yeah, it was in there.
Um, and it's sort of straightforward. I'd be happy to answer any questions other than, Boyer usually has a markup of 11%. And we asked them, hey, you know, guys, you're only, only receiving this for us, thank you very much, and storing for us, thank you very much. Um, so they reduced their cost to 6%, one of which 1% is for insurance and 5% markup. So they did come down on that for us. Happy to answer any questions.
Any council questions or anything?
I think if you could also just touch on the funding of this, it's not actually additional, it's not $142,000 additional, right?
It is not. That money is already in the budget. Much of it came from donations from, um, MACT, provided $10,500. Mark Twain, Dignity Health, provided $25,000. And the District Board provided an additional $25,000 towards this. So, yeah, we, the Community, um, Design Committee picked this out from a large selection of different things. We were looking at individual pieces and where to put them. And they just really liked this particular design because it comes with programs. There are little QR codes that you can do while you're at the thing. It'll show you how to use the equipment, exercises to do on it. Um, and you can have exercise classes you can actually pick up online also to do that circuit.
So Amy, really the change order is not, it's, it's to allow Boyer to, to purchase the material and store the material and then, okay?
Yes. And anybody who would have hired to do this, um, in fact, we did shut around. They were going to charge us to store it as it came in anyway. So we were gonna have to pay something for the storage.
Any public comment in the house or online? I'll bring it back to council because I have one more thing, but you can say that. You're perfect, okay? So my question is, like you mentioned MACT and there's been other people I've heard mention that donated, um, from, you know, $1 to however many dollars. At the end of this, are we going to have a little thank you type plaque, thank you type something? Or are we still in the, I'm just, I wanna, I wanna show my gratitude to everybody that has, that has helped this project along.
So you will notice that there are, there's candy there?
Yes.
Um, the names of the major donors will go on the candy.
Oh.
And there will be some little plaques on some of the equipment, um, if you wanna learn more about the organization. Some of them are adopting particular pieces.
Thank you. That's perfect. Anybody else up here? If not, we'll move on to item number...
We need a motion.
Oh, that's what I'm hearing.
I have a motion to approve.
One second. Shemante?
Aye.
Rorleo?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye. Thank you.
You have to be there all the time.
Okay. Onto item number C. Approved Resolution 2477. Approving the General Plan Amendment, removing General Plan 2020 Implementation Program. Seven BM, requiring no net increase in wastewater connections. Amy Augustin.
17 years in the making since this was, uh, placed into the city in 2007. The idea that we should not increase, net, have a net increase in sewer line connections, um, in the city that excluded Greenhorn Creek and Angel Oaks, which are on a different trunk line. Um, so the general plan has included a mitigation measure since 2009 that says, nope, you can't add any new connections until you take care of X, Y, and Z. Basically, in 2012, there was an updated engineering study that said, okay, we told you first that you had to replace the entire sewer line, but no, actually there are these sections. Surprise, surprise. Boosterway, Balaceto, um, even the main street, but the highest priority was booster. So now the booster is done, um, per the direction of our former city engineer and our current city engineer who oversees wastewater. Um, we can now remove this restriction as we had promised Habitat for Humanity would. But we didn't want it staying in the general plan so that somebody could say, wait a minute, um, this is what you're doing. The Planning Commission voted unanimously, 5-0, all present to recommend to you that you adopt this general plan amendment. And lastly, I was asked by the engineer and our superintendent of public works to stress the fact that this was always a delivery issue as opposed to a capacity at the wastewater treatment plant based on two things. One being a bottleneck on Boosterway and the other being on inflow and infiltration. The inflow and infiltration problem still exists and we still need to do replacements of projects to fix that. But basically, that bottleneck is now removed. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff, council? If not, open it to public comment. Anybody in the audience? Anybody online? Okay. I'll bring it back to council.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution Number 2477.
Second.
Shemante?
Aye.
Rorleo?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye. Thank you.
Moving on to item D. Approved Resolution 2481. Authorizing acquisition of Formula Allocation Permanent Local Housing Allocation PLHA Funds and approved PLHA Five-Year Plan. Amy.
Mayor and council, we previously discussed this on September 3rd and you asked for some additional information. Um, so we're bringing to you the five-year plan, an outline of the program, how we would pursue it, and those specific things that we would be looking, uh, to fund with our $298,855, which is actually already allocated to the city. It requires us to prepare a plan and claim it. Um, we have a representative here from Habitat for Humanity who was one of the parties that asked that we pursue this funding. We were given eight parameters that we might pursue. Given the limited amount of funding, we settled on pursuing four. Um, basically, pre-development, development, acquisition, rehab, preservation of, um, single multifamily owned and rented housing and accessory dwelling units. Capitalizing reserves for services to preserve or create new permanent supportive housing. That would be like purchasing a transitional house type thing. And assisting persons at risk of homelessness. Um, a lot of times this is case management or supportive services to help do rehoused for that. What we are looking at is having, uh, councilmember, planning commissioner, finance, city administrator, calibers, continuum, continuum of care, resource connection, local builder. Go through any applications we might receive. Likely interview the people to sell us your program. And then the selection criteria actually comes mostly out of the general plan housing element. Um, more specifically, how well does the proposal facilitate provision of decent housing, suitable environment, all income levels, ethnicities, age levels, sexes, including disabled and at-risk, consistent with city demographics. And those income levels that we would be targeting, extremely low, very low, low, and moderate. For your reference, extremely low for a family of three is $25,820 in 2024. Whereas moderate goes up to $103,900. So basically, um, for our criteria, as I mentioned, we, we rely heavily on the general plan programs achieving balances between, um, housing costs and income levels. Sort of that housing economic, jobs, housing balance type idea. Um, and as mentioned previously, we do have a certified general plan housing element. We have, uh, approved annual housing reports approved. And basically, that's pretty much it. Approximately 15,000 of it would be available for administration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just curious when, what, what's the timeline? When are we gonna form the committee? Are we first of the year, Amy, or what are you thinking?
So we have to go out for 30 days after you would be comfortable with releasing the five-year plan after tonight. Then we go 30 days, then we shut everything over to HCD. They do the paperwork and then we would say, yep, you got the money and we would start working on it.
So we have to, we have to secure the application before we can get the money?
No.
Oh, okay.
You get the money, then you send out a, hey, guys, we've got money. Here's our criteria. Please apply.
Council questions, staff questions? If not, I will go public. Anybody in the member here in the house, online? If not, I will bring it back to council for approval.
Sure. I'll make the motion to approve, uh, Resolution Number 2481. Authorizing acquisition of Formula Allocation Permanent Local Housing Funds.
And the five-year plan?
And the five, and, yes, and approving the PLHA Five-Year Plan.
Second.
Shemante?
Aye.
Rorleo?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye. Thank you.
Amy, it's Amy.
Okay. Item number D. Approved Resolution 2483. Authorizing an application for a micro enterprise community development block grant. Amy.
So some of you may have seen me passing these out to everybody who walks in the door. Um, we've also passed them out to DAC. We've passed them out to a lot of the local businesses today. This is some...
Website.
And put it on our website and on Facebook. Um, we'll be reaching out to all of our vacant property owners as well as, um, additional businesses. This is for an application for up to $1.5 million to assist for-profit small businesses through a community development block grant. In the past, we have applied for this money. We did receive it, um, but we did not spend it because we did not have an underwriter. Um, the sponsors did not want to be underwriting loans. So we'll be meeting Thursday and I've already been told by Bank of Stockton they would be more than pleased to be our underwriter for this grant. So should we get this grant as well as the one we just talked about? If we need some underwriting services, we're set. So the main things that we looked at were assisting commercial tenants to, um, tenants or owners to rehab their building. For example, I talked to one business who wanted to, hey, I can't get any customers in here in the middle of summer because my air conditioner won't do the job. This could help with that. The target here is that anything you would give money for would tend to be a business that could hire people who do not have to have a college degree. So those types of businesses are what are being targeted. Uh, working capital for startup, assistance in how to run a new business, securing equipment to maintain existing businesses. And basically, the resolution itself on page 56 shows how we might divvy up that money. Um, there we go. Thanks. And this is just a wild guess. We can change categories and, we can change money between categories after we get the grant if necessary. But because of the cost of doing rehabs and upgrades, we basically said, um, for tenants, a half million. For owner-operators, half million. Working capital, 120. Assistance on how to run a new business, 25. Um, physical upgrades to maintain existing businesses, 250. And general admin is around 105. Be happy to answer any questions.
And then general admin for 105 would go to Bank of Stockton?
Yes.
Or split between staff?
Staff.
And to Stockton, yes.
And this, these aren't, these dollars aren't in a form of a loan though, correct? Those are dollars that businesses would apply for and...
Many would be grants. There are some that they require to be loans. And that's generally, um, ones that would go to housing. So hopefully, we wouldn't get into that as much here. But for housing ones, you have to do it in the form of a loan so that you can, um, also tie it to a 55-year covenant. That you have to maintain that. Um, and also, October 28th, this requires a public hearing, open house. We will have one here between 10 and 12, um, to take input from business owners who may want to suggest programs that they'd like to see happen should we get the money. Maybe even sign up to get on the list. So that's where we are.
So help me understand, the underwriting is necessary because of...
It would be, so, yeah. So if we had to do a loan for a large project, it's up to us to decide. If we wanted to do it as a loan or a grant. Um, I will be meeting on Thursday to ask them if there's anything they can do relative to grants and implementation of grants. Um, we already know they can do loans, so.
I think it's the tracking of dollars and everything, right? Is what, is what Bank of Stockton's gonna do too, correct?
Well, the main thing, my understanding has always been is, um, underwriting isn't the definition. Loans?
Yeah. I would have thought.
And so that's why I want to talk to them on Thursday. We're gonna meet and see if they can also do some.
Granting. Because I think some of this should just be granted.
Yeah, maybe too.
I don't feel like we should be...
I think the majority of it...
Exactly. And so I know this last, the last time we had this where we got the new, like the facades on the outside were cleaned up. Things were power washed. They did new awnings. They did all, all sorts of stuff. And I can't remember, and maybe Veronica remembers, but the lighting that kind of went along the, well, along the side. Like it outlined the buildings. That was nice and things like that. So I don't know if that would include that, but it like ACBA could also be involved. ACBA could also be involved, like somehow ask for some of the funding to help with some of those.
So.
Business development projects.
If we could make, I, I think the key here is making the argument that it would encourage jobs for people who don't have a college degree.
Gotcha.
Or promote economic development.
Yeah.
So we could make that argument, that's where we would go.
So the only reason why DAC chose not to participate, it was because of the underwriting and the loans. So if this was completely grant-based, they then might, I mean, I...
My understanding and I, we would have to ask DAC specifically, was if they didn't want to be in the business of choosing.
Choosing businesses who get the money.
Right.
That's the, that's the problem, was it's the vetting of who gets what.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that makes sense to me then.
Because they, they encompass all businesses, they're not supposed to be selecting who gets what funding and trying to be equitable. That's my take on it.
Okay, well, that makes sense then, that makes sense.
Any other council questions, staff questions? Public comment, online?
Let me get up again?
Yeah, you gotta come on up, Tab.
You want to work? The question I have, is it for businesses or property that could have put a business in?
The money is can be used for existing businesses or if you are proposing a new business, so you would in fact have to open a new business under the ground. Yeah, so you could, yes.
Any other public comments or questions, Veronica?
Hi, Veronica, Ms. Wilkie. I'm all for this, I do have a small business downtown, and many of the businesses are really trying to work hard to, to get people in. Not sure if you noticed, trees are sapping.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Sticky, it is sticky in town.
It's sticky, it's sticky.
So, me, I want a better awning.
Yeah.
Anyway, I think that this is really encouraging, and we really need to encourage business. I like the fact that you, Amy, were saying, you know, for people that are, don't have college degrees, it's like you don't have to have a college degree to, to know and have a passion for a business, and we need to, as a city, support our small community, that's why we all live here, it's such a big part of our heart, so, yeah, I'm a hundred percent in favor of this.
Thank you, Veronica.
Sean Colley. Time, I guess my question is about timing. I've spent big, big dollars on rehabbing the space I'm in right now, is there any time limit to when I could apply for money, money I've already spent?
Oh, like retro or retro?
Retro.
So some of these are questions we're going to have to ask C and BG, and retroactive I will have to ask about. Going forward, maybe looking at stuff that might help you address some of the retroactive stuff, or trying to fashion it in a manner that you could do it that way, might be the way to approach it.
I think there might be some creative.
Yeah, I agree.
Solutions there.
It's nearly 50 grand to do an icon on the building.
Yeah.
Amy, I appreciate you bringing this to us, I think it's an important step for us to be able to revitalize the, or whatever that word is, I don't even have any coffee to...
Oh, we get you a cup?
It helps for our businesses downtown, so if we're looking for a motion.
Uh, hold on, or yeah, I can in one second, but let me bring her back. And then I would just like to say thank you to Bank of Stockton for taking this and doing that, it's a big undertaking, and I appreciate it, so.
Okay, now, with that said, I'd make a motion to approve resolution 24-83.
I second. Shemante.
Aye.
Rolio.
Aye.
Sharada.
Aye, thank you.
You'll get them, Amy.
Amy, there's really money available for this?
Yeah.
So these are different pots of money than the general fund?
It's like a light bulb just went on.
No, no, it's not, I've been sitting here thinking that, I've been trying to keep my mouth shut here tonight, but, I mean, it's kind of amazing that, that there are those dollars available and, you know, and then the other dollars that are available, it just, yeah, I'm really glad that, that we're pursuing that, thank you.
All right, next move on to item F, approved the agreement authorizing PG&E to use Utica Park during a public safety power event shut-off. Steve.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and council members, before you tonight is a request to consider an agreement between the City of Angels and Pacific Gas and Electric. We have a current agreement with them, it's a five-year agreement, it's in the event of a public safety power shut-off. They have had the ability to use Utica Park as a customer service center, kind of affordable way to interact with their customers to help them through the public safety power shut-off. That agreement that we currently have will conclude on October, it says 15th, but it's on October 25th. So they are asking if we are willing to renew that agreement. The agreement calls for PG&E to have the exclusive use of the park at the discretion of the city in the event of a public safety power shut-off, and in return, they would pay us a $100 per day fee. I asked, how many times was the park used during power, safety, public safety power shut-offs during the current five-year period, and they said one time. So, it also includes a, so it's really a one-year agreement with four one-year extensions for a total of five years. It includes a clause that talks about restoration, so that if any of their equipment damages part of the park, it's their responsibility to restore the park or the parking lot or whatever they use as close as possible to the condition that it was in before they used it, and the agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney's office, and we recommend approving.
Chris, so, I'm assuming if there is a public safety power shut-off, they're not going to be able to access the park now, correct? Or what are, what are your thoughts on that, Steve?
Yeah, I told, so there is a PG&E contracts manager, and I told them we're right in the middle of a very large, about $4 million expansion to the park, and we expect that those improvements to be concluded sometime around mid next year, maybe spring to mid of next year, so you're not going to be able to use it until the park is open to the public, and they completely understand, they have multiple agreements in this area, Utica Park is just one of many that they can choose from.
That was, that was going to be my next question, so they do have a backup plan?
They have multiple other locations that they can use, and they know that they will not be able to use it while construction is going on in the park.
Any other council questions, staff questions? If not, I'll kick it out to public comment. No, come on up. Oh, you were just, I, that was a carry-on, I got you.
Carry-on.
So on this, we need a motion to approve the five-year contract, or yearly contract for rehabs.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement authorizing PG&E to use Utica Park during a public safety power shut-off event.
Second.
Shemante.
Aye.
Rolio.
Aye.
Sharada.
Aye, thank you.
Item H, discussion on draft of city official handbook, Steve.
Uh, wait, or G?
Out, right, no, I did. How about item G? Approved project completion and change order number two to Booster Way sewer upgrade project, accept the project, and authorize the release of retention funds.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council members. I have good news, and I have good news.
All right, that's the best type of news ever.
The good news is that Booster Way is completed, it's been going on for a long time, as Amy mentioned, this is a major thing that needed to happen so that we can continue, especially with growth in the area. The work was done, I guess I have good news, good news, and good news. The work is done, it was completed ahead of schedule, and it was completed at a $9,000?
Yep.
Let me find it, get you the right, right dollar amount, $8,990 less than budgeted, out of a $667,000 budget, so to hit $667,000 project within $10,000 is...
Pretty good.
Pretty good.
Pretty good estimating, yeah.
With that, are some change orders. So, before you tonight is a request to consider the approval of contract change order number two for the Booster Way replacement project. It includes, in the staff report, you'll see a list of items that were added, things like extralinear feet of certain types of pipes were needed when we, when the construction company conducted work on the Utica property, it damaged their parking lot, so we had to repay their parking lot, grind and repay the parking lot. So, the total increases are $68,560. So in exchange for that, we had a total decrease, so there were things that were budgeted that we found that we either found a better way to do it, or found a different way to do it, or didn't need to do it at all, to the tune of $77,550. So if you take the $68,000 increase and consider the $77,000 decrease, that's where you get the $8,990 total reduction as, as outlined in this change order. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Greatness, we never come in under budget, it's amazing.
Well, I appreciate the contractor also, was working with the city.
He was very good to work with.
You know, very good, we appreciate that.
I just want to say thank you to Chris and his staff, and Steve, and, I mean, this is a big, it's a big check, it's the start of, I think it's the start of a lot of projects being done, I hope and pray, so. Here we go. Any other council questions, staff questions, if not, public comment? Ready? Anybody online? Okay, if not, I would bring it back to approve change order number two and authorize the release of the retention funds, what else was in there, accept the project, yes.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second your motion.
Oh, you get the, yeah.
Shemante.
Aye.
Rolio.
Aye.
Sharada.
Aye, thank you.
All right, now we move on to item H, discussion on draft of official, city official handbooks. Steve.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The city has a handbook that is used by all officials, city council members, staff, planning commissioners, any formal committees established by the city council, and the current handbook that is used was last updated in January of 2021, so it's not very, very old, but it was old enough that it needed an update, and timing being what it was, we wanted to have a new handbook in place for the new council that is seated in January, you know, election November, new council seated in January. So, through a lot of hard work of the city attorney's office, coupled with work that was done before I even got here, council and staff at some point back in April committed time to giving input to the city attorney's office on what areas of the handbook they wanted to see updated and improved and clarified, and it's all for the purpose of making sure that everyone's on the same page, nobody's kind of out there doing their own thing, the expectations of council, the expectations of staff, and the expectations of the commissions that you empower have some type of rulebook to go by, so that's the purpose of this handbook. The city attorney's office have provided to staff a draft version of their handbook, they provided it last week, and I'm proposing a timeline that calls for the presentation of that draft to you tonight. So, if you, between, this is my recommendation, you receive the draft handbook tonight, between now and the next council meeting, which is November 5th, if you have comments, if you have questions, if you want revisions, if you want things different than how you see it in the draft form, please give me those, that feedback. I will then provide the November 5th council meeting. I will then provide that feedback to the city attorney's office, who will make another revision to it, including the changes that you recommend. That's by November 5th. At the November 19th regular council meeting, we will then have the draft back from the city attorney's office for you to vote on and approve, which makes the December 2nd council meeting the official approval of the book, so that when the new council is seated in January, they have a brand-new handbook to go by. So it's a, it's a reasonable timeline to make sure that you give the input that you want to give, the city attorney's office has the opportunity to take their time and make sure that everything is done in order so that we can have a new book by January. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Council questions, staff questions?
I'm just curious, because I would like, I did review it, and there are some things I'd like clarification or, or changes, but I'm just one council member, so how do you propose re, how, how do you see handling that?
So, the idea is that you provide your feedback to me as individual council members, I give that to the attorney. The attorney then kind of sifts through that information and makes, makes sure that your recommendations are legal, they're clear, there's, there's, it doesn't conflict with anything else in the book, and that's why it comes back on the 19th, so that the city attorney can have the opportunity to include the things that should be included, and it gives you one more meeting to say, I want this, I don't want that, before you vote on it in December. So you really have four council meetings, you have tonight, you have November 5th, you have November 19th, before you finally vote on it on the 2nd.
You can make changes on the 2nd, last minute change.
Even last minute changes on the fly on the 2nd, if you like. And it doesn't have to follow this timeline.
Everybody will get a time to see, everybody will get a chance to see the reviews, you're going to kick out of this week, or whatever.
Right, right.
And you'll, and when, when we get the next revision, I like seeing the changes, so tracking all those changes, okay, great.
Any other questions here? Public comment? Okay, so I think we're good with Steve's direction, all three of us, yeah? Okay, direction given.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to I, discussion and direction on city-owned building at 584 South Main Street, once again, Steve.
Thank you very much. So before you tonight is a request from council to have some discussion on options for what is the old city hall at 584 South Main Street. So just some background, back in June of 2020, the City of Angels moved its city hall from 584 South Main to its current location, which is 200 Monteverde Street, or Suite B, and the, the building that was city hall has remained vacant since June of 2020. That parcel is currently zoned commercial with a use code of government. It was built in 1900, it's on 14,000 square feet and .33 acres, this is according to the county assessor's office. So when the city hall moved from 584 South Main Street to its current location, it was as a result of the building being in somewhat of a deteriorated state, and that was compounded by some flooding that occurred. I've personally been to that building, I was there again today, and, you know, the location is great, and the building could be great, but it needs some work. There's some issues that, that need to be addressed before that building, in my opinion, is inhabitable. So, in, so when we moved in June of 2020, we started looking into what to do with that building. In February of 2021, staff initiated some staff work to determine the approximate cost of rehabilitating that building. We enlisted the services of an architect, along with the then-city engineer, who determined that it needed several things, for example, it needed an accessibility front ramp, steps, and parking spaces, it needed an accessible restroom, it needed a new heating and air conditioning unit, new flooring, new carpet, probably needs a re-roofing, window repair, dry roll, dry rot repair, and so on. The estimate at the time in 2021, so these are $20,021 that we're talking about. The estimate at the time in 2021, so these are $20,021 that we're talking about, if there's no prevailing wage, if the city doesn't have to pay prevailing wage, we're talking about $120,000 to rehab the building. We're probably going to have to pay prevailing wage, which puts it in $20,021, a $350,000 estimate to bring that building into a usable state. That was in 2021. In 2022, the council budgeted $200,000 to make some work towards rehabbing that building. That money wasn't spent in the 2223 budget. In the 2324 budget, the council authorized $250,000 in the budget for rehabilitation, and that money wasn't put towards rehabilitation of that building then. In the current year, 2425, there's no money budgeted for rehabilitation of that building. So I bring it to you tonight just to give you, I'm sure you know the history, but I did a little research to find out what was needed, what staff work was done, how much money are we talking about, so that you can have some information. If you want to budget some money this year to make these repairs, if you want to just have this information and create a plan as more of a, of a longer-term, far-reaching, including all city buildings, or if you just want to address this building now. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
So has this building been appraised? Do we know what it's worth?
It was appraised, because we listed it for sale, which I don't think we remember.
It's not, I didn't, I didn't know that.
Do you remember what the appraisal was?
I don't recall any of that. I think we listed 400, 300, 385?
I remember 380, because I remember.
Yeah, something like that. We did have an appraisal done.
Right, and I want to say, was it Rastus?
Right, which is why in 2022, 23, we did not put $200,000 into it, because we listed it.
Right.
And then in 2324, the reason why we didn't put any money into it is because we were waiting to hear from the grant on the
Oh, sure, the Resilience.
Resilience, Resilience Center that we were going to build. So that's how we've ended up here. Yeah.
So, yeah, everything you, everything you said, like, I remember there being ADA access. I mean, there's some flooding, there was, and, and we were, I think we were trying to save money at the time, too, and rather than having multiple PG&E bills and all sorts of stuff. And I don't know if that building was being quite occupied to the fullest extent that it is now. My only question is, is there actually enough office space in there without doing big remodel and that type of stuff? I mean, I don't like the way it looks on the outside. I think it looks from the house driving by. I don't know what I want to do with it, other than I just want to clean it up a little bit. Like, possibly remove that fence. I mean, we put in some ordinances and different things for the reason we put up that fence a while ago. So we have some, I think, protective, we could remove the fence and do a little cleanup, weed eating, leaf blowing. But I don't want the roof to rot and have the whole thing just turned to shambles, either. But I don't think we have $450,000, because what, yes, at today's value, that's got to be probably $450,000 to do that.
At this point, it would be better to list it and get rid of it. However, it's just one of those things that, when we're looking at a space assessment of what we have and what we want to do as the bigger picture, you want to think about where is our fire department going to be able to be housed? Where's our, the growth of our police department? Where's Public Works? Where's City Hall? I mean, it's just this whole big plan.
And if I remember right, when we, when we looked at that prior, was we were going to make that like the city center.
Right.
Like, like an emergency center, you know, we
PD was going to be there.
PD was going to be there, everything was going to be there.
How's our stuff there?
I don't think Public Works was going to be there. I think Public Works was still out there, but city, fire.
Public Works was going to move where the old city hall might have.
Maybe it was coming here, something.
Something like that.
I forget, was it with the old one?
Yeah.
We were going to make like a public campus.
Right.
Right, and I don't know if that's an option still. I think we need to, I think we really need to vet everything with the space needs. But I just need, I want to know what to do with this.
My, my biggest concern going into this winter is, is that roof?
Right.
Is, can we get someone to at least do that piece of it? Just to let us know, is the roof going to make it another winter? What's the, what's the?
Yeah, because we need to protect our investment.
We do.
So if you're, if you're looking at this list, you know, re-roof, look at our windows and dry rot repair, because that's not going to go away. I mean, I, I think, because we need to, we need to protect what we have. And, you know, so I think if you, if we were going to go down this list, I agree with you, Caroline. Let's look at the condition of the roof. You know, what is, how extensive is the dry rot? And by window repairs, are the windows leaking? Or that they just, we just need to upgrade? I mean.
I think all the above.
Probably, I probably all the above.
Yeah.
There what?
Broken and boarded up.
Oh, windows are.
Were some of them, I'm going to look at wrong again. Were some of them actually built single paint?
Oh, I'm sure they all are.
I'm sure they are.
So I think all the window sashes, so they all, and I agree with, I agree with everything you're saying. It's just once, if you open that can of worms, then you might as well go. Because if you're going to look at replacing the dry rot in the windows and this and that, then you're into it.
I'm not saying windows. I think we need to do whatever we can do to protect our investment. Roofing is one of them.
Yes.
Looking at the extent of dry rot, you know, and, you know, what is that going to cost? If the windows are boarded up, then somehow their, you know, interior is being protected at this, at this point. That's my opinion.
No, I'm
I mean, that, yeah. Thing about that property is that it has access off of 49, which is really valuable. So, you know, the dream was to have that, that center, but maybe that's not the place for it at this point. And so we do think about
I don't know if this is that place. I mean, the fire and PD there and Public Works who makes more secure out where they're at. I don't, I don't know. I know there was a lot of that.
I don't have the answer to that question. But I'm just, I'm just saying, like, every year that sits, it rots more, and our investment is worthless, so.
I'd say we list it back on the market. That's, that's where I would go at this moment. And, and if we get $200,000, then it's $200,000 to put into, let's say, this facility or a study or something else. Because right now, we don't, right now, we don't even have budget to do anything to it. I mean, unless we, I mean, we can rob Peter and pay Paul.
So, and Amy, you, there's nothing coming down the pipeline for the Resilience Center, or have you heard, or are there any kind of?
It could conceivably come back up again to another Resilience Center grant. And quick question to the city attorney, would we have to go back through the surplus separation process and that whole thing, which takes at least six months?
Right. Now, if there's public comment, then we'll bring it back.
Yeah.
All right, let's hit public comment real quick.
Hi, Bron, my team. First of all, I'm so glad this is being addressed. Building, though a great design, it's probably a wash. I don't think that the city should invest any money into it. Maybe if you can Band-Aid the roof, so it could go up for sale. As you stated, Caroline, the access is awesome.
Yeah.
Has an existing parking lot and a green space. The fencing, I had asked a council member and a staff member about the fencing and that it was placed with the idea of the attorney's office identifying all the land owned by the city to be used in any type of situation where we had to provide information to the citizens, and that that would be included, that, that property. And that once identified, then it would, then we wouldn't have to have that hideous fence. That's like horrible, horrible. So all in all, sell it. Get some money for it, and, you know, the administrative offices, the police department, fire department, as I think should be, all located together over where previously we had talked about it. There you go.
Any other public comments? Any online?
I also think, and I appreciate your comments, you know, I think we need to walk the talk. We just passed an ordinance about a year ago with vacant buildings, and we had a vacant building. And so I think the conversation we're having tonight is an important conversation, because if we expect others to do the right thing, we need to do the right thing also.
And my only question, like, and I'm just throwing it out there, do either you two see city hall being there and have to have it there?
No. There's other options out there. There's options of acquiring other land and building something out that's correct. I don't know. I mean, it's just, it's just disintegrating, and it's not good. It does have the access. And hey, the property next door to it's for sale, too.
So I think, I think we get rid of the fencing, we clean it up, and we try listing it again.
Yeah.
I mean, and see what we can get. And if nobody bites on it, because I don't want to get rid of it for $20,000 either. But, you know what I mean? Heard a song in the dance, is what I'm saying. But I, I think that's where we go. And we put that money to a better use of some sort of facility.
Well, we shouldn't be landlords, right? So we don't want to rent us.
Right.
We're not in the business of being landlords. It's weird.
I don't know, what do you, what do you think, Steve? I mean.
I appreciate the comments. I've heard, you know, I've only been here for three, this going on my fourth month, and I've heard a lot about the fact that that building is right in the heart, you know, right down. Everyone sees it, it's a city building, so I appreciate you guys taking this on. My recommendation would be to, instead of giving direction today, let me bring something back to you with a cost of... So one thing I didn't mention is that fence has been in place since January of 2023. A chain-linked fence.
Yeah.
It's rented on a six-month basis. And we can get rid of it at any time, but the current six months ends January of 2025. But we can get rid of it earlier if you'd like to. So I would recommend, let me bring something back that is in the form of a resolution or some kind of document that gives you options of what you want to do so that when your wishes are carried out, there's something to refer back to.
Okay.
And it might be something like, take the fence down, contract or contact, you know, a contractor or an architect or whoever to give an assessment of what it takes to make that building the most sellable possible without significant investment of funds. And let's just find out what that dollar amount is and get it done. If that's what you want to do, if you want to sell the building, I vote as to sell it. My, my recommendation is to sell the building.
Yeah, I think we need to do what we discussed earlier, though. I think we need to get a quote on, let's establish the roof and so that we can at least protect our investment in the building and then move forward. I mean, I see it as, you know, we just had that resolution. I mean, could this be like, not, I don't want to say, I don't know what the correct term is, Amy, but like a halfway house, or, you know, it's, you know, I don't mean halfway. See, I don't know what the right term is, but
Talking about like affordable housing or?
Yeah, or, I mean, it, it was a house.
It was.
You know, I mean, so
I think you'd have to remodel the inside.
Well, yeah, but, or maybe they could, you know, there's
Sierra Hope, I thought Sierra Hope or somebody asked to
Sierra Hope did.
Asked to use it for like a meeting facility or
Yeah, and they still have asked. But you will notice when you go through the surplus lands process, that you will have to first offer it for things like affordable housing and that type of thing. So
So that is then affordable.
We did not get any qualified offers the last time we went through that process. However, Sierra Hope did express interest in having their offices moved over there, food bank, that type of thing. So they even offered to rent it. So supportive or transitional housing, again, when you go, you'll have plenty of time to consider this going through the surplus.
I don't think she even uses the renting more.
I don't either. Sierra Hope would like to present at a rate. I mean, I think that's an absolutely wonderful thing for their community, so. But let me open it back up, because I see a citizen here. Slide on in.
Pie in the sky, if it goes up for sale and I purchased it, do the rehab, would the council, the city council, consider renting it back as their headquarters?
Oh.
I'm the landlord at that point. Just throwing it out there.
Got you. Okay. Close public comment again. Is there any other questions or anything? Steve, did I give you enough, I think? I mean, direction's kind of, is we're, we're moving towards selling it.
Would you like something brought back at the next council meeting? Or, I know we're trying to keep that one light, you want to wait until the
I want to
Yeah, me too.
I want to get it kind of cleaned up, is my own thing. I'd rather spend the 15 minutes on it. I mean, I want to, yeah, I'd like to get it cleaned up and moving in a direction. And if we know some costs.
What I'm hearing is the fence, the outside appearance in terms of landscaping and just the overall cleanliness of how it looks as you're passing by. Are we talking about contacting a contractor or an architect to give us?
I think, I think
Not at this point.
No, but I, I think you should contact some local roofers and see if we can get a quote on that. And what is the condition of the roof and
And just for information, you saw that in 2021, there was a quote.
Right. I don't even know if I'd go that. I, I would just remove the, I would null and void the, because what is it, January you said?
Yeah.
I would null and void the contract with that. We've already paid it. Remove it, quickly clean it up, and talk to three real estate offices to see what they think, whoever thinks they can give us as-is price. And if, and they're the real estate people. If they think us throwing a new roof on it would give us another 50 grand, or, or as-is is the best, that's my thought. I don't, I don't know what you guys think.
Yeah, I, yeah, if we're not planning on keeping the property, then I don't want to put any money into the property.
I don't either. I mean, like I said, unless, unless that real estate office, so unless that real estate person that does that business says, do this and this, and you can get more money out of it, but I don't. And we have to go to the surplus anyway.
Is a roof leaking right now? Or just because the shingles look like they need to be replaced?
Yeah, I, I didn't see any, there are
Visible water stains?
I didn't see any water stains.
I thought it was on the exterior walls, or some, I don't think it was inside.
I saw some tearing of the, the lining of the ceiling, but it's not, you don't see daylight. You don't see the roof through the ceiling.
Okay, okay.
It's like the, it's almost like wallpaper that's on the ceiling that has been torn off.
Wasn't that house moved there?
Yes.
From somewhere else?
Yes.
Cal turns.
Yeah, it was, yeah. So there's my direction.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody else is on board with
Any issues with
We'll go down parallel tracks.
Okay.
Start the surplus land track.
Okay.
If that's a direction.
Well, that's the first step.
The direction from the three of us, I don't know how the other two will feel when we bring it back, so we'll see.
We'll see what they come back with information, but that's, okay.
Got it.
Moving on to item number 12.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
Administration report.
I have some future agenda items, but I have no administration report at the time.
Move on to council report, I'll go with Miss Caroline.
I went to the Wild West Fest, and it was, it was nice to see the Whittle and yeah, Helby family there, being honored. Yeah, it was nice. It was great to see all the Foundry, the new Foundry exhibit, too.
I attended the all hazards meeting, and I'm glad it's not 10 o'clock and Amy's still here. There were four, there were four tasks that the committee was charged with. Fire, erosion, erosion and grading, flood and stormwater, and emergency response. And the, I appreciate all the work that staff and Amy and, and the consultant did on this. Amy is preparing a presentation for us as a draft preview and to bring it to council first, and then you'll take it to planning commission?
Well, you guys.
Okay, planning commission and then us. And then Amy is the one area that they didn't spend a lot of time on, and Amy's going to help take on, is this whole idea of what do we do with all of our heritage roads? And how do we make those safer? So I appreciated the work and look forward to seeing that document. Hopefully, it's going to be more user-friendly. Tomorrow, I go to CPPA. We saved almost over $400,000 in comparison if we were hooked up to PG&E. And we used about 2 million kilowatts of energy. But joint power is really is a wonderful thing, and we're so grateful that when they put the dam in, they decided to put it in our county.
Yeah.
I mean, I know I was here when they were filling it, and people
Uh, I mean, I know I was here when they were filling it, and people chaining themselves, but the amount of power that's been generated, and the amount of savings that have been passed on to all the public entities is, is wonderful. The other thing they're gonna talk about tomorrow, and I've been doing some research on, is CCWD has asked CPPA to consider doing, hiring a consultant for CARB compliance. And I've been doing, you know, right now we're exempt until 2027. I don't know where the discussion is gonna go, quite frankly, uh in 2027, if we purchase any vehicles, they have to be electric. I haven't seen a mandate that we have to go out and purchase vehicles just to replace what we currently have. So I think that it's gonna be an interesting discussion. And I'm not gonna be political about that, but anyway, um it's gonna be interesting to see where they go with that CARB compliance and, and the mandate, if you do purchase new vehicles after 2027, they have to be electric. The other thing I wanna say is, this is almost my anniversary meeting, and I wanna, I wanna thank staff, all the staff and fellow council folks. I thoroughly enjoyed being on the council, I appreciate your patience. Uh, it's been a huge learning curve, but I think I'm almost, sometimes I think I'm almost at the top of the curve and, and now understand more, but I, I do appreciate all of you and the work that you folks do on behalf of the citizens, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have anything to report, I missed out on the Wild West Fest because we were getting ready for a FFA event, and I was cooking for seven hundred people or something, which went off really well, and I hope they made a ton of money, so. Pass that Rose, on to item number fourteen, calendar.
So October is up there for you, this ribbon cutting has actually was canceled and moved to November November twelfth.
So I'll see that the next council meeting have moved in.
Yeah.
Uh, the UWPA meetings been canceled.
Okay. For October?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have it listed.
Oh, outage is coming up for you.
What was that?
Outage, water, water usage.
I have that, uh huh.
Okay, just, yeah, tell everybody, watch your water usage start in a minute.
Yep, November to December thirteenth, so.
We're gonna do the phone again with the power, with the water usage or outage. And we notified last year using the dialer. And whatever.
Yeah, we can still use that. And it'll, we can put it on the water bill, so.
Good.
That's what we did last year also.
And it's like, yeah, basically, yeah.
And we've been updating the IDL, we had that survey going, it's still live, and I still did. And I think we've had maybe a hundred updates, but you know, there's, it's okay, so we get current information.
We'll start putting it on the website and the Facebook closer to the time, yeah, because people aren't gonna, and forget, so. There's your November calendar, we're trying to keep the fifth light meeting for you. Holidays coming up as well, and then we're into December.
Just like that.
Thank you, Rose.
Yep.
Item number fifteen, future agenda items, any council members wanna put anything down there before Steve hops in?
So I, the only one I have, Steve, when we started talking about it, is the cost of a traffic mitigation study, what would that cost? And I'd also like to know how much money we have collected with, with those, you know, over the, over since it's been. That's, that's the one I have.
The only thing I have, it's just got the major, um, I had some citizens on this end of town where it goes from twenty-five on the way out to forty-five through the annex here. People are speeding, in their opinion, if we can have PD just watch that.
On Velocico or?
No, no, on forty-nine going out of town. Once you get out of there, like by the car wash, people are going a little faster than they showed you there, so. That's all, I've just had some citizens concerned about speed up there, so that's the only thing I have, and that's not exactly an agenda item.
At some point, getting, getting an update from you guys on how um the software.
Migration?
Yeah, migration.
Big smile on your face.
I know. Michelle Rose, you got anything to kick in before we close this thing? Okay, Steve, yep, I know, Steve's last one.
Yeah, just, sorry, two things, and they're just follow-ups, that um we received the draft two eighteen letter today. So it needs to go through city attorney's review, and we plan to bring that to you at the November fifth meeting. So just so you know, since we had some discussion about it last meeting, the draft was created.
That meeting doesn't sound very light at this moment.
I know.
We are trying, yes, we will continue to try to keep that a light meeting. So we do have the draft, uh plan on putting on in the November fifth meeting. And then the only other thing is, I think it was last meeting also, we had the fee uh schedule come to you.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, right.
So we have some revisions to um some of the things that you questioned, and we plan to bring that to you November nineteenth.
I got so involved in that discussion, I, I think we did, did we approve the signs? The signed, the sign fee for downtown and otherwise like business signs? Did that, was that part of the piece that got approved, or was that part of the piece that didn't?
That was just the cost of living, we approved, I thought we approved the cost of living.
We approved the CPI.
Yeah, on that.
Cost of living, okay.
We wanted a deeper dive on the building cost.
Yeah, I'd like to also do a deeper dive on the sign cost, but when we bring it back.
Okay, on the nineteenth.
Yeah.
That's all I have, thank you. Okay. Moment we're looking for, item number six, oh, what, item number sixteen, looking for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
She meant to. Roll it.
Aye.
Toronto.
Aye.
And we're not going back.
Seven eighteen.